Let's call their end committee commission meeting order. Please rise for the political leaders.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, minutes of previous meeting. Second. The motion is second to approve the minutes. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries, minutes are approved. Year-end bills. We have a couple sheets on our desk, two, one from Highway and then one state together just over as a my addition of the law. Any questions?
Any questions on highway bills that don't go to financial management, that's just our final payment for our over the 2018.
Okay. Further questions?
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the bills. Discussion.
Just one question, Kevin. That looks all right then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Further questions? Seeing none, roll call please.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Fred.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Laiwon.
Aye. Motion carries. Approval of the agenda, anything to add?
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries and the agenda is approved. Crystal. You're up.
So I have just a couple of things. First, I misspoke in the last meeting. The sheriff's department did have his evaluations in, I didn't realize that until after the meeting. So just apologize for that. The veteran service officer position, I think the job description in JVA sent over to you guys. So I don't know if there's something that's changed on that or what your thoughts were.
Just on the veteran, we can't demand a veteran, is that correct?
Well, so how, when they turn in their application and they're going to claim veteran status, they're going to get them extra points for that.
Right, but we can't demand a veteran?
I don't know that I would.
If I could interject there, I spoke with the state commissioner. We have that certain group of people out in the western part of the state that were causing the open records issues here a few years ago. They're still there. So the state commissioner said make sure we're above board on everything we do. So therefore, we'll be above board.
You know, there's nothing in century code saying stadium has to give veteran, however they have to have training, specific training that's written in century code.
And that veterans additional points that we give, that's normal to any job application, correct? So, I mean, they're getting treatment accordingly, so they're veteran, they'll get the points, so that's a good thing.
Okay. Do we have any further questions on the job description or the, I guess the qualifications and all that, we got it set up there?
It looks very thorough.
Yeah, I agree.
It looks very thorough. You know, a lot of.
Lots of detail to it. Stacy, you see it?
Yeah, so Crystal and I, we went over this. When she first got here and we had to update it and get it looking the way it was supposed to. And we took from the state and we took from other counties to make sure we're covering all the bases on there. And even though we tried dressing it up and getting more to the point we were looking for, we had to back off a couple things just to make sure we were that perfectly perfect deal.
Benson and Nelson have seen this?
Oh, I don't know if they've seen this.
It was, I emailed it to the officers. Took forward.
They should have seen this meeting or if they have a meeting list, they had it forwarded out.
Did they seem sort of in a preliminary sense okay with the idea? I saw the email from Nelson, but with us creating committee and having them.
Yep, yep, and we got representation from, no. Yep.
Okay, so they, okay.
Nelson and Benson.
Perfect.
Yeah, they both said they would like to have one person.
And I figured that would have been just wanted to make sure.
So it sounds like the preliminary idea we had to do the four person, look, well, two about the two commissioners from here and one from each was satisfactory for both counties.
Okay. Any further discussion on the job description as well as the qualifications for the VSO job that were going to post?
Anything else we should do, Stacy?
Well, seeing as I'm next up, I'll figure, just move right into it.
Yeah, that's fine.
And I did talk to the state commissioner about when I was interviewed for this position, he was here, he was present for the interviews. I asked if he needed to be present for this next step and he says only if you, the commissioners, felt it was necessary. And right now at this point, he's very, very busy. He's spending just as much time in Bismarck as he's spending in Farquhar. So it might be a difficult time issue if we didn't give him enough lead time. But I think if we handle it just the way we're looking at this and with the panel that we're talking about having, we should be able to hit everything that we're looking for. And I, did you have applications ready for tomorrow then?
None, so they're all on the website.
Yep, okay. Because I have had interest from numerous individuals wanting to apply.
Well, that's good to know, you know, in case there was a round of finalists and no clear, you know, committee couldn't come to the decision, you could always call.
Yeah.
I mean, at that point, but I think that that's.
The one thing that I spoke with the state commissioner while he was hanging with was I told him that in my resignation that I asked to have a two-month training period and he commended us on that and he said that's never happened in the state before. So we might be starting something.
They were trailblazers, all right.
How many veterans we got in the county, about nine hundred? Is that correct?
Well, I'd say right now it's growing. We're at least nine hundred plus, then you throw in Camp Grafton, because Camp Grafton isn't in that number. When we were talking at any given time, two to four, six hundred sometimes in the summertime training out here at Camp Grafton. So we can be looking at about twelve hundred sometimes with Ramsey County. Benson and Nelson there, it's dwindling there. We don't have people moving in, in great amount of people there that build those numbers back up, but we're down to now we're losing all the Korean era veterans.
Yeah, this is probably one of the more important positions we have in the courthouse.
Thank you very much. That's one thing Crystal and I, even Crystal commented when we talked about, no one really knows what I do. I don't play solitaire. But just from some of the issues that I've commented or talked with Crystal about, I mean, for example, if I have a veteran with PTSD and we're doing an interview, they have to sit with their back away from, they want to watch the door and always aware of who's coming and going at the door. And we do have veterans with PTSD that can become violent at the drop of a hat. And you'll hear the language coming out of there. Jeff's probably familiar with a lot of that. And they don't hold anything back when they want to let go. So it's one of those positions, you have to make sure the next person is aware of what they're getting into.
Okay. Further discussion on the job description and qualifications? Any more questions?
And make a motion to approve it as submitted and.
Okay. And would that include in motion to advertise then?
Motion to advertise as well.
Okay, how long are we going to advertise for, Crystal?
Over.
Closing date, it looks like six.
It was on there, correct? I didn't catch that, I guess, okay. We have a motion, we have a second. Further discussion?
So who would, from the commissioners, even on that board, and then who wants to do the reviewing of applicants and scoring, or do we want to bring that to all commissioners, all the ones that are going to sit on the panel?
That's a good question.
We'll want to, we'll pass this and then.
Yeah, I think that's okay, then we can vote to do the advertising, then we can discuss once this is settled down. Okay.
All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Okay, now we can discuss, yeah, how would we like to handle scoring the applicants as well as what commissioners would like to sit on the hiring, or the, I shouldn't say the hiring, the interview committee. Yeah, there you go, thank you. My words are escaping me today. From, I believe, I don't know if they've appointed people from the other two counties, but they had people that were interested, correct? Doris Griffin.
Doris Griffin and.
From Benson and Nelson was.
Was it Ellen, what was it?
Plus that, okay.
What is plus that?
We have one.
He is a veteran.
Yeah, okay. So we have one from each county, so we're going to do two here, so I guess volunteers is fine.
I'd be interested in doing it.
Okay.
I'm the kind of soul.
Anybody else?
I guess I would as well.
Okay.
You know, I'd happily volunteer for that.
Okay. Is it okay with everyone? I guess I need a motion and a second.
I don't want to move.
Motion for commissioner to, this year, for you to sit on the board.
Okay.
Hiring board.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. The only question I would have then is, do we want, do we want everybody in the loop when they're doing the scoring or just the two people that we are putting on the hiring? Interview. You're on top of it, I tell you what.
He's been through this before.
Yes, the technical term.
No, I have no problem with that. I think, I think as far as the preliminary stuff goes, I'm.
Well, I think the preliminary stuff, I don't have a problem, just so, I think it's good to be informed who the finalists are and then you, you know, so at least we have an idea of their backgrounds and so that when you guys come with a recommendation, at least we know what you're looking at there. Okay, that's fine. So we have a motion and a second to appoint Commissioner Frith and Commissioner Wakefield to the interview committee for the VSO office.
And are we including Crystal on that, I would assume?
Yeah, yes, of course. As an ex officium, you know.
And I would like to sit in on it too.
Yeah, that's completely reasonable. So it will be the four commissioners, Crystal and Stacy then. Okay. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Crystal, anything else?
That was it.
That was it? Okay, good deal. Stacy, do you have anything else?
Well, you've covered it all.
You have a fantastic sweater.
Thank you. I got another one out in the pickup in case somebody wants to wear one.
Did you bring two in case you had to sell that?
I did. You know, I was thinking if this didn't win me anything, I'd have to switch, but I missed out all the way around.
We'll have to Photoshop you into the.
There we go, yeah.
Picture, because I know you're in the other county tonight, this afternoon.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you guys. Sheriff Nelson.
Good day.
You made your day.
It's not time of year for vehicle bids again, so I do have seven bids, which I'm very happy. I finally got some bids from some dealerships that were reluctant to before, so the low bid is Chrysler Center with their Durango police package. This is at twenty-eight, four eighty-four ninety-eight. The next one would be a Chevy pickup, that's a special service vehicle, which is about a thousand dollar tire. And the rest are all over that thirty thousand dollar one. You've got a pickup, SUV from Ford, actually two pickups and an SUV from Ford and a Tahoe from Chevy were the other, and a pickup from Dodge is also there, but.
Now, it seemed to remember the last time that we talked, you seem to be more interested in pickups than SUVs, is that?
No, it's just that that happens to be what the best, you know, the value. I gotta look at value between, is it a viable, you know, some of them aren't viable police package type, where I have other counties that have pickups, so I mean, you know, well, we have two Durangos already, we've had them for, well, one of them's actually on its fifth year and the other one's on its fourth year, so we have, it's not an unknown vehicle to our, to our using it, so.
Okay.
It doesn't, but it's.
Sorry, I.
That's right.
I was just going to say, as far as like fleet composition is concerned, you wouldn't have a preference.
I have no, no, it doesn't matter one. It's, it doesn't make that, you know, there's an argument for both of them. Some of the guys like the Durango because it turns around better. Pickup's a little less cumbersome, or a little more cumbersome, but you know, if they're going anyway. But that's a, you know, that's just a, you know, they don't have that choice, so. But anyway, I guess my recommendation would be to order the Durangos from the Chrysler Center and with a little bid of twenty-eight, four ninety-eight.
We're having two?
Two.
Move to approve.
Second. The motion is second to approve a little bid from Chrysler Center for two Durangos, twenty-eight, four ninety-eight apiece. Further discussion on that motion?
I have one question just to give you, Steve, you talked about, you talked about any black ones instead of white ones?
No, that don't matter.
Does anybody have an issue with that?
Well, some people have big issues with, you know, changing colors, not by pink.
That'd be yours.
We haven't seen it, so it's not really well.
Now, talk to the other girl, that's their argument. You know, it's just kind of a, sometimes you just need to try something to change once in a while, maybe it's better, maybe it's worse. I don't know, I guess I just think, well, you know, if we don't ever dabble there, I don't know. There is no additional charge for whatever color, you know, whatever color we pick.
One of each?
Yeah. I could do one of each. We have all white ones now, it doesn't matter. It's just something I'm thinking about. I haven't decided yet if I'm going to go that way or not, but there is no additional charge.
Who made the motion? Ed?
I would just leave that off and we'll just.
Yeah, I was going to say, just sheriff's put it on his department, you can figure out what you want to do.
I just wanted.
Well, it's kind of on the same lines, it's kind of on the same lines of me changing the strapping on my car this year.
And I did mention to Steve that that would.
We didn't, we just tried something different, and I'm getting fantastic response from the public. But if we ever try something, you know, you just never, you know, it could have bombed or who knows. But I thought, well, let's try it on one and see what happens.
Good, good. I have no problem with one or both of them being a different color.
It's always going to be on the realm of appropriate and, I mean, it's not going to be anything.
Surprises.
But not with pink.
No pink, they will never know.
You got to paint us a picture when it's done then.
And then I do have another thing to discuss once you're done with regarding the vehicles.
Further discussion on the vehicles. Seeing none, or we're paying, we're not paying for them right now?
No, we're just ordering.
Just ordering, okay. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Both please, I'll come in before the other one's last year.
Yeah. Motion carries. Okay.
This year, I'd like to, Candy and I have discussed this and I think it's a better option for the county, but we're looking at trading in vehicles instead of holding them at the county shop and selling them at a county auction sale. I've talked, I talked to all three of the dealers when I asked for the bids. What they will do was will present the vehicle and they will give us a dollar amount off the price of the bid when we trade them in. The plus side is we get rid of the vehicles right away, we're probably going to get as good or better money for a trade-in than we do at our public sale. And the other side of the coin is, okay, they usually sit at the county shop for a year before we have a sale, or a year and a half, because we only have sales every two years. So now these two will sit there all of next year plus half of the next year and just sit there. We still carry liability insurance on them the whole time to protect our interest. So it does get to be kind of, and then we're also mucking up Kevin's yard and they're just two cars sitting there and.
Let's try it, let's try it.
It's an op, and you know what, we, and I have not, they're not, I mean, if they give me a low ball, I don't have to accept it. We can just keep the cars and sell them outright, I mean, but it's an option I think we should look at. What did we get for the vehicles this year? Anywhere from one, two, three, I think it was the high.
I think the high-end one was probably, yeah, then.
Three, thirty-five?
It was thirty-five, maybe for that one.
So, I mean, if I can get anywhere close to that, I think we're best off of just, you know, by the time it's paid for advertising and get them all up and running over there, I just think it'd be better for us to not deal with it for that long a time to, so it's an option I'd like to throw out there that I'd like to be able to, if we can get a decent trade-in value on them, and they said they'll take it right off this bid number, bid price, so it's, it's not going to change the bid at all.
There's nothing legally that's.
Nothing comments shows why this indicates that that.
Yeah, I don't think it would.
Other counties do the same, they just trade in, because it's, you're basically making one vehicle for another vehicle, it's not, it's not like you're, you know. It's not like I'm saying, okay, Adam, I'm getting, we got this bid, I'll sell it to you for this price even though, and then not put that towards the, it's all part of the same.
Yeah, as long as it's part of the deal in terms of the trade-in, you're fine, otherwise if we do want to sell it, it has to be.
It has to be public, if we do it, otherwise it has to be public auction.
That's what I thought, but I still need to double check.
So we need a margin for that?
I don't think you do, I just, no.
When, when are we going to know?
It's the department.
Yeah.
Well, we aren't going to, we don't even pay for them until, until they arrive. So at that point, then I'll probably drive our cars over, then they'll, they'll go through them with their trade-in guys and they'll say, okay, here's what we'll allow you for. So what's going to happen at the point of sale? So I'm not even going to know that until whenever they get here, because they're going to run probably three months, four months, I hope, to get them that soon, but.
Well, you know what we got for the last ones.
Yep. So I, I mean, I have an idea of what we have, so.
You could make the decision on it.
As long as we're giving a better value and doing it in, I think I'd like to be able to do that going with your approval.
I don't think there's any concern with that.
We used to do the same thing with motor grinders, we'd sell them ourselves and it was a pain because we had to get them all ready for sale.
Well, that's what we do now, we line them all up and make sure they're on and drive them over there and they would sit there for a year and a half, you're boosting them, you're.
They're gone.
Yeah, I don't know if we necessarily need a motion for it, we'll just say you can go ahead.
And it basically cuts right off our bid price, so the check we write for the car will be less, so.
Works for me.
And they said they'd be glad to do that, all three of them said they'd be glad to work with that option, so.
Okay, anything else?
No, sir.
Take care.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin.
All right. First up, Firestone has six new motor grader tires that they ended up with, I'm not even sure how they ended up with them, basically. They're willing to sell them at a loss or a reduced price, I guess. For six hundred and sixty-four fifty-three each, which is three hundred dollars in ultimate price. It's a good buy and it's coming out of the next year's budget, but you know, I really don't need them, but at some point we would use them. Point is, it's an excellent price.
You ever ruined one?
Oh, yes. Run a piece of steel through them and, you know, through the side wall and they're junked, yeah. And these are, at least a couple times a year.
And these are like brand-new tires?
Yeah, brand-new.
It's not like they were banned. Certainly.
I'll make a motion. Kevin, go ahead and do that.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to, I'll let Kevin go, by the motor grader tires. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries.
Then we just need a couple motions, I got one more to add on, but the motion to sign the responsible charge saying that I will be the person watching over the project on Ramsey County two, so it requires a signature from the chairman.
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to allow the chair to sign the agreement for the discussion.
Just one question, you got it?
Yeah.
I think we talked about a couple meetings ago about East of Webster. Do you think old two is going to end up this narrow at that road?
Not this time around, no.
It won't?
There's enough room this time. East of Webster, yeah, that one's really narrow, it won't be that bad, no. There's like another foot on, on Ramsey County two.
There is that much wider.
Yeah.
I was just curious.
No, no, foot isn't much, but it makes a difference.
Oh, no, it doesn't, yeah.
Yeah, I see your concern because I see it when I drive down the road, like, man, guys drop the tire out and you, you have to get it back upon, you know. Or two won't be quite as bad as eight.
Won't be like that.
Are you sure that we can do to rectify that before we do this?
Uh, not for this project now, if you can ahead of time, if we would have planned for it before the design and everything, you know, they can, they have dirt out there and fix the in slopes, but then that adds a lot to the cost hours, but, you know, you see that happen on a lot of projects now because everybody's in the same boat.
Right.
So, you know, to get that safety factor, even if there's like one foot of shoulder or something, we're putting down two feet of shoulder, so you got to have all that dirt out there, plus you have to improve the in slope, now that's part of the project, we won't let you not improve the in slope. So that's even more dirt and it starts getting expensive.
You know, we let this continue on over the years, pretty soon around sixty-five mile an hour, try to be safe. And the feds will step in, make a bowl of that.
Yep, they have certain standards, you can't get so narrow before, you know. It's like twenty-two feet, I think that one's twenty-four feet up there on eight, and this one's like twenty-five and twenty-six feet.
They'll end up with that much here, you think? So I'm just curious because.
It'll be the last left, then, in other words, until it's time to start doing in slopes.
Exactly, yeah, because they're all in the same position too.
How much extra does that cost per mile approximately?
Yeah, I would have to look, it would shock you.
It would, yeah.
Yeah, because all that dirt in and black dirt on top of it.
Clay in there and put black dirt back.
On repelling roads, I don't think there's any number that ever doesn't shock you on cost when it's all said and done.
I would look at the cost, so just so you got an idea.
Yeah, I'm sure there's a lot of those, county roads and the state.
The whole state, yeah.
Same problem.
Exactly. Yeah, that's the deal, they kept building up, building up, well now, there's no more room to build them up.
If the legislature is aware of that, you know, make a dollar, query dog money and because they're dumb, they're going to do this again, everybody's that guy. When they're pumping oil out of the ground, so. I think we make them well aware that they're going to have to put more money in shares for projects on these old vehicles.
The state has just gone through that like nineteen, I remember when nineteen had the chores and the rock garden about it, now they wind it up, two eighty-one south, the, you know, same thing down to Carrington, Carrington was good, but Norwood Oxford North, you know.
Would, would something like that safety money that we have, that's always due at the end of the year, would a project like an inflow project fall under that where we could do?
It would, but there's never enough dollars, I mean, it's talking a lot of dollars, yeah. But yeah, that probably would qualify if you had a half-mile section or something.
Yeah, I mean, if there were some spots, maybe we thought it would be worth doing it or something like that, but I'm sure, I'm sure it'd be pricey, obviously, or just maybe we'd get some offset cost if we wanted to do something.[1676.82] Okay?
That's all I have.
Okay?
Maybe for sake of argument, that's something, a, a price you could work up.
Yeah, just so we at least have that.
Yeah, I'll, just so you got a number in your head, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion to allow the, the sign the sheet?
Yep.
Further discussion. Yeah, in a second, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign, motion carries, you have one more, you said?
One more, there, since we paid the final bill on our paving project in twenty eighteen, we have to sign a form that says, uh, we're done. It's been inspected, and, and we're done with this, so we need to sign a final certification for the local match for that, and that's our, that's the, for the chairman also.
Who's the, second?
We have a motion in a second, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Pull the same sign, motion carries, guys are getting weak on me here, come on now.
Okay.
Type up. Yep. Okay, uh, on to new business, beer licenses. We have a motion.
Everybody have their paperwork in mind, Candy? Thank you.
Please, sir, do.
I'll be checking, I'll stay with my.
Yeah, we have a motion, did you make the second?
I did.
You drafted, we have a motion in a second, discussion, seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign, there we go, letter of transfer.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the uh, letter of transfer, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign, motion carries, warrant appointments. See where we're at here, to, which ones do we need? We got water board. Yes, that would be fantastic, thank you. We're gonna do all of these right now, I'm gonna correct.
Um, if you wanna do, if you just wanna do.
Yeah, see, social services, we have that taken care of.
And then.
Okay?
And that one is first, and then the next one is, like, commission.
Yeah, that's commission stuff.
Yep.
Okay, so, we need to start with, uh, we'll start with the water board, since that's the first one on the list. Uh, we currently have, uh, expiring terms of Dwayne Ash and Jim Berg, I believe, let's see here. Dwayne and Jim both said they would be interested in reappointment, we also have a letter of interest from John Martinson, I believe. Do we have any, any thoughts or discussion?
Same thought I had last time we had this issue, we have two that want the job that are here, and we have three that want the job that are here.
Okay.
It's just a thought.
Okay.
That's, that's kind of.
I think that's reasonable enough, for me.
Okay.
Reasonable, and uh, you know, I, I don't know if it's ever been noted that, that is a requirement to be here, but um, one of the things that sets us apart and different is geographically. Um, it gives geographic representation to the water board by having Mr. Martinson as a representative from the northeast part of the county.
Okay.
Uh, we have northwest would be Ryan Volk and Jim Berg currently. Um, southwest would be Paul.
Christiansen.
Christiansen, southeast would be John Brown, and then centralized, you know, with a fifth member, would be Dwayne Ash, um, we're here in the city of Devil's Lake, and Dwayne does give a lot of, of uh, of his time, not only to that board, but other boards that he represents as a part of that, maybe, of that representation, so. But maybe I shouldn't say anything, um, since uh, Dwayne sits on the joint board of Ramsey County's. Representation on that, that board.
Okay.
We need a motion.
Yeah, we're in a motion.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve John Martinson and Dwayne Ash as the two water board members.
Okay, we have a motion to appoint Dwayne Ash and John Martinson to be Ramsey County Water Board. Any further, oh, we have a motion, second, excuse me, second. We have a second.
I'll second.
And I think, uh, for argument's sake, talking of this over with Kerry, that, um, with my position, I should probably abstain, abstain from voting.
Okay.
Unless the commission would like me to vote.
I think that would be, you know, whatever you feel would be, would be, I think that way I would, you find them. Okay.
And first, I want a question for Mr. Martinson, who's on there, here, what's the biggest interest you want to be on the water board?
I guess, basically, kind of what Mr. Frith said, is to represent the northeast district, especially with this Edmar Cooley Cleanout project coming forward here. I could, I mean, I'm there to talk to the people that are up in that area, and hopefully, I'm for it, so to be able to get the information out to the people and to the landowners to take and have it go forward.
Where are we at with the Edmar cleanout?
We're, uh, the engineer's got it now, Fisher's been negotiating, getting all the permits, and he's getting the final figures down, so now we can have a public meeting, and be able to be more specific, and let all the landowners know what it's gonna cost, and what to expect.
Just with a guess, what do you think the landowners will do, are they in favor of it?
In my area, I only know two that are not for it, and they're the type of landowners that, and they're not absentee landowners, these are people that own the land department. But they're the type of people that don't wanna, if they want something done, they just don't wanna pay for it.
So you got two, and now you got four, quite a number?
I mean, no, there's only two people that are against it, everybody else that's on it, that was, have been at these meetings that I've attended, are all for it. It's the absentee landowners that it's gonna be the big thing to get the message out to, for the renters, and they can explain why it needs to go forward.
Well, I think it's a project that's well needed, I'm not against the project at all, but I'd sure like to see it go forward, everybody benefits from it. You know, there's uh, there's a lot of these guys up in the country, for reasons, you know? Shooting me, are they there?
Shooting.
Further discussion on the motion in, in the second to appoint, uh, Dwayne Ash and John Martinson to the water board. Seeing none, vote helpers.
Brown.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Fred.
I'm staying.
Okay, and Mike Potter.
Aye, motion carries. Okay? Next, we will go to the planning commission, where we have currently James Ziegler, John Martinson, and Beth Black. I believe all three gave letters of, uh, interest in being reappointed.
Move, move, second.
Okay, we have a motion to reappoint the three individuals to the planning commission, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign, motion carries. Um, then we're on to Ramsey County Corner, Dr. Dallas is the former, we have to reappoint the former here.
I'll remove, second.
The motion is second to appoint the Dr. Dallas, we'll see if we can, further discussion.
Mr. Herman?
Okay, guys, uh, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign, motion carries. And we're down to the reorganization and annexation board, uh, where Elizabeth Fisher, uh, would like to be reappointed, has been our deputy.
Motion to approve.
Yes, second. Motion in a second to rea, reappoints.
Really question, Candy, often, if it be, when they're needed?
Um, we actually have to meet once this year.
We have to.
Mm-hmm, and I think going forward, we, it probably will be, you know, as the smaller schools start to resolve.
It'll be a little.
That's all I have.
Yeah. Yep.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign, motion carries, okay, now we need to go to, yes, uh, Lake Social Service District, we don't have to worry about, cause we've reappointed to the zone. Um, Senior Commission on Aging, Commissioner Brown currently sits on that, wanna be reappointed?
I'm actually getting here, I know that, but.
Well, if somebody else would like to take it, that's.
If it's not known to us, I'll take it.
Move to nominate Commissioner Brown.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to reappoint Commissioner Brown to be Senior Commission on Aging, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Senior Meals and Services. Commissioner Brown's also on Senior Meals and Services.
One more time.
I'm ready.
Make a motion to approve that, second. You'll help me out, Doc?
Sure, I'll call him if I want to.
My heart is surgery, you got it.
We have a motion in a second to approve, uh, Commissioner Brown's Senior Meals and Services.
Second, aye.
It might have five.
Further discussion, seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign.
Pleasant meeting.
Motion carries. And lastly, uh, North Central Planning Council, Commissioner Cur, oh, excuse me, currently Commissioner Wakefield.
Just know once, just one thing I wanna raise, which is, it's possible, if not likely, that, uh, I might need to be a part of a group of people approaching North Central Planning for financial support in the next year.
Recruit yourself.
I, I intend to, if, if I'm on the board, but I also wanna make it known now, just in case. I second.
I, I could, depending on what you mean.
It's orderly.
So, so it's not a regular, it's, it's a monthly deal?
Yeah, it's pretty infrequently, it's a great, great little.
You guys talk over, please.
I, I would do it if Lucas needs to.
Okay, if, if we have a situation where he needs to recruit himself, then we can always appoint.
Okay, so, so you're pointing me as primary, and you as secondary?
Right. For now, we'll just do you as primary, and we'll cross the bridge when we get to the other.
Okay, and I mean, I can always just, I can always just abstain from any votes that would involve myself, obviously, but.
That's general, but we have to do so. Okay, we have a motion in a second, three, uh, reappoint Commissioner Wakefield, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the, pull the same sign, motion carries. Okay, approval of BA abatements.
There are two more.
There's two total, three total.
Three, two more.
Okay.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve all three abatements, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign, motion carries, approval of the contract with the Village Family Service Center.
Um, I have a question on that.
Okay, well, we have a motion, but.
There's, there's, there's two, um, there's two contracts.
Okay.
There's one for one year, and then there's one for three.
Okay, cost difference?
Nope.
What if we sign for one year?
We always do one, and then the only thing that would change is the amount of full-time employees, but the rate would stay the same. It's just so that we don't have to.
Do it every year.
Review it every year, we would just report to her.
Let's just do one, that's worked out, isn't that fine?
One is fine.
Yeah, unless they're gonna give us some time in the deal, if we have to, tell them, tell them to come back cheaper, you know?
Move to approve, second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the one-year contract with the village. Okay, further discussion, hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign, motion carries. Certification of polling places booked by mail and hourly wage for twenty-twenty election workers.
No changes?
No changes.
Move to approve, second.
We have a motion in a second, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign.
Oh, there is one change.
Well.
We got new equipment.
Well, well, we do that, should work great, right? Motion carries. Discussion on lodging and restaurant tax ordinance.
So, lodging and tax ordinance, um, what we have, first off, went up to be reviewed, came back down from a tax commissioner's office?
Yep.
There is about four, five words that were left off in one section, which changes, um, the lodging and tax. So, what it is, is we have the lodging and tax not including alcoholic beverages, which are subject to state sales tax. The actual statute is not including alcoholic beverages for consumption off premises or purchased. Um, so if we want to make changes to allow for the tax of alcoholic beverages that are onsite sales, we would have to have, I believe, a special hearing and publication. We also pulled up the city of Devil's Lake ordinance today, and took a look at that, they also don't have that provision in there.
Yeah, and I matched it to the city of Devil's Lake.
Oh, is that where you're, okay.
And that's, that's why I wrote it to match the city of Devil's Lake, so that we wouldn't have any questions about competitive advantage, or anything like that, outside of.
Right, and that's the other issue, so if we were to amend it, then we would be having a different tax than the city.
It would be different than the city. And that's.
And I think that was the concern of the business owners of the county, if I remember right.
Yeah, and that was what I heard expressed as well, the only thing, uh, so we're missing out on, is it all sales of?
It is onsite alcohol sales, as opposed to off-sale.
On sale, sales of alcoholic beverages.
So if you purchase alcohol for off-sale consumption, that's not included.
It's not. Right, okay.
Right. Yeah, so that's what it is.
So there's a tax on on-sale, is that correct?
There could be a tax on on-sale.
But we don't, we don't have.
We don't have it in the county ordinance, nor is it in the city of Devil's Lake ordinance.
We don't really want it, so.
Well, and I wanna match the city.
But if you wanna, if you wanna keep your businesses locally, the same as your businesses in the county, then you wouldn't want to have it.
And, and, and just for disclosure, when I was going through putting this together, I was kind of amazed that that's how the cities is written. Uh, I went to the state tax commissioner's website, and they had listings of how each city administered their tax, and I think the city of Devil's Lake was maybe one of a handful, three or four, that, that have it written that way, every place else does alcohol.
That did. Okay.
They include the alcohol.
They include the alcohol in the taxation, yes, we were one of the only places that did not.
So if we ever in the future wanted to revise this, is it a full process with hearings, everything else?
Um, in the future, it would be a full process, yeah, yeah.
All right, just.
We could change it now?
No.
Well, you'd have to have one publication and a special meeting to change it now, and then you would take and put your county businesses at a different level than the city businesses.
Well, the only thing that scares me, not that it really matters, but if, if the city ever decided to go into line, right, then we'd be, we'd need to change it again.
If they wanted to, what, if the city wanted to change the same?
If the city wanted to amend theirs.
I mean, presumably, they don't, because they, they haven't, but.
If they do, then the county would go through that process at the same time, then.
Yeah, we could always coordinate, that would make sense. Okay, yeah, I've got no problem with it, do we need a motion, or is it just?
The only thing, the only thing is to.
Uh, the only thing is to change the effective date to Jan, from January to April.
Yeah. They said technically, since we're not collecting the tax, the effective date has to change the day we start collecting the tax.
It's, we have a nine-year window, I have no idea how much.
If we're saying if you included the alcohol portion, I couldn't tell you, uh, because.
We got eleven bars, we got eleven bars.
Cause of the comparison of the city doesn't have the alcohol portion of it in it, so I, when I was looking at what we thought it could possibly, I was just deriving off of what the cities.
Yeah, and all was.
You know, so I, I have no clue how much.
But doesn't mean it's right or wrong.
No, I don't, I, I just, I'm saying, I don't have a clue, I, I couldn't even give you.
Do we have any, do we have any comparable counties that have a, I mean, not, not, not that it's gonna affect what we choose to do today, but it would be interesting to see what the differential is.
Absolutely.
Well, this is something that's brand new, so.
We're only the second county that's.
I think you're getting your interest, if, if that website has some stats, we can get some, otherwise.
Is there other cities in October, are there other cities that copies?
Well, yes, but the only problem you're gonna run into is that, when, when, and I don't know this for certain, it'd be a question for the state tax commissioner's office, but when they do this, this portion of the tax, they don't differentiate where it's coming from, whether it's alcohol, or whether it's food. So, if you went and looked at Grand Forks or something, for instance, and they're doing both, the bulk number would be the number, regardless of this year or next year. Now, I don't know if there's any way for the state tax commissioner to maybe break that out, they just don't have it broken out, but what I've looked at on their website, if I recall correctly, didn't have, didn't have it broken out separately, they have the restaurant portion, and then the lodging portion broken out, those are two separate taxes, but actually breaking off the alcohol portion of the restaurant taxes, I, I didn't see stats for that, so I, I couldn't tell you what, I'm sure it would, it would add to it, obviously.
I'm sure they've got an internal, though.
They probably would do if we talked to them.
Does Grand Forks County have alcohol tax on it?
The city does, but the county doesn't, because the county, unless you have a home rule, I guess they could possibly have something of this nature, maybe.
I'm sure they got home rules.
Oh, yeah, they do have home rules.
But I don't know if they have a.
I don't know, but they could always look at a home rule county and check, I mean.
I'm sure there's ways we could find the number, and then kind of figure it out, but would be perfect.
Get it all, try to figure. Okay, either way, I make a motion, we move the effective date to April twenty-twenty, April one twenty-twenty.
That's correct.
Yep.
April one, okay. Uh, we have a motion to just move the effective date to April first of twenty-twenty for the lodging and restaurant tax. We have a second.
Second.
We have a second, further discussion.
I thought that's what the date was.
That's when the tax collection starts, but we.
We have the effective date.
We have the effective date, it's January one, and they, they said for stipulation sake, we're supposed to run April one.
Yep.
So, okay, that's fine, that's my fault, I'll take, I'll take credit for that. Okay, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign, motion carries. Okay, visitors and delegations, cricket, okay, any announcements? Okay, any announcements? Nothing. Who won the ugly sweater contest?
Cheryl for two.
Cheryl for two.
Gummy first.
Nathan got second.
Nathan got second, and I got third.
Good deal.
And Jeff got a participation trophy.
He got a, he got a blue ribbon. Okay, seeing no announcements, we are adjourned.